Oh, he looks like.
Yeah.
Look at him. Look at his smile. Look at him. Smile.
Hello, you there?
Hi. Yeah, I can hear you.
There's Daniel.
You look like you're in a cabin in the woods somewhere.
I'm in a bar, actually. Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn the camera on so you can see. That a saloon.
Where is your location so we can?
We'll be there.
Smile. Hello.
Yeah, I can hear you.
You look like you're in a cabin in the woods somewhere.
I'm in a bar, actually.
By the way, you're, uh, you're, we're showing this on, you're plugged in.
Yeah.
Hey, Daniel.
Yeah.
I like the way you got it shaved around like that. That's good.
Yeah. Try to keep it cool when the warm weather hits.
Warm weather.
Hey, Daniel.
Yes.
Whenever you guys are gonna go into executive session, I'm gonna put you into a breakout room. And then I'll make it up on the YouTube stream that you guys are in executive session. That's the only way to keep you and the courtroom live at the same time. So be prepared to answer that whenever it says that you've been moved into a breakout room.
Okay. Okay.
Hey, Daniel. Yeah. I'm waiting for Tyler Eagle to send me an updated contract because it expires this year, so it's up for renewal. Once I get that, can I send it to you for review?
Yes, and please copy Katrina as well.
Okay.
Hopefully, this one is not 250 pages long.
I have no guarantee.
Sure. If it's just a renewal, hopefully it's not, you know, all the track terms like last time.
Really, the only thing that should change in it is probably the price. Which I'm hoping it doesn't increase too much.
Go down, right?
Yeah, probably not.
Probably not. The prices never go down.
No.
Especially if I've been paying the same price for the past five years.
Or I have that now.
Oh, he does.
Actually, it's a little worse.
Hold it. It was not, it was not a while ago.
Did she fix it with sale? They fixed it with a sale.
Let me know when it's up. We're up. All right. Good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, April 13th, 2021. It's 10:00 a.m. We're here to conduct the regular session of Hunt County Commissioners Court. We're also being streamed online at huntcounty.net website. You can go to the link and view it. This time, I'm gonna call the meeting to order and ask Commissioner Martin to lead us in prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to our flags.
Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the gift of life. May we have understanding and patience with each other as we carry on the duties of this community and this Commissioners Court. Please continue protecting the health care workers, our veterans, our military, and we pray for this great country we live in. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States of America.
He is the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance.
Thank you, everyone. We have Commissioner Hutchins, Strait, Martin, and Harrison present. I'm Judge Stovall. I'll be presiding over the meeting. Commissioners, you have the minutes from the March 23rd regular session in front of you to hear motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. This time, we're gonna have public testimony. Citizens are invited to address Commissioners Court on topics not already scheduled for a public hearing. Public testimony may be made by emailing public comments at huntcounty.net. Public will be permitted to offer public comments by telephone as provided by the agenda and permitted by the presiding officer during the meeting. Recording on the telephonic video meeting will be made and will be available to the public in accordance with the Open Meetings Act request. Speakers are limited to three minutes and should conduct themselves in a civil manner. Commissioners Court cannot take action on items not listed on the agenda in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Concerns will be addressed by county staff. They may be placed on a future agenda or addressed by some other course of response. We'll hear public testimony at this time. We'll also, for those that are viewing online, if you come with comments later in the meeting, before the meeting's over, we'll go back and take questions or comments from the public that's been sent online. Is anybody here that wants to make a public comment? Daniel, do you, Daniel out there?
Yes, I'm here.
Do we have any comments online yet?
Yes, one. I can read that now. Okay. This is from Pamela Lang. It says, "Good morning. I received your information from one of my neighbors, Amy Moore, who'd been in touch with Brian Tool with Hunt County Development. I'm sorry I didn't get my comments to you in time prior to your meeting Tuesday." That was Tuesday three weeks ago. "I'm hoping we make it to the next Tuesday meeting agenda. Along with the concerns on County Road 2506 and the large potholes, the roads within the subdivision were carved out in a manner that have led to very poor drainage issues. The grading was not done properly in many areas, leading to brand-new home builds having the same problem. There's a pond out here on the development that has been leaking and now caused moisture to come up through our slab and floors. The subcontractor for our sealed concrete floors has come out and looked at our floors and stated that we have a moisture problem and that it will lead to foundation issues if the pond on the development itself is not fixed. I'm happy to discuss further regards Pamela Lang."
Okay. Any other comments? Now, we'll move on to new business under the consent calendar. Commissioners, you have consent calendar in front of you. Entertaining a motion for approval of consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number one, a resolution extending and/or modifying the April 28th, 2020 COVID-19 related resolution and social distancing guidelines for preventing the spread of COVID-19. Daniel?
I believe that the county clerk passed out the copy of today's resolution earlier. The only changes from the last court session were updates to the dates themselves. And I pluralized a couple of words that were, that needed to be pluralized, but otherwise, it's exactly the same form as last time. And basically enforces the, or states publicly that we're enforcing the administrative district judges' orders related to the courthouse and otherwise are following the requirements from the governor's most recent executive orders. And that, to the extent in the next two weeks, that there's new executive orders from the governor, that the county will follow those as well.
Okay. Commissioners, you got any questions? Now, entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number two, quarterly report for the Boys and Girls Club. Commissioners, you have the report in your packet. Entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number three, presentation from Freezing Nichols, Inc. to start the Lake Toak and Comprehensive Plan and Lake Zoning Regulations Update Project. Conduct an issue identification exercise with Commissioners Court and discuss future meetings and public input. Daniel Harrison?
Okay. I just have it. We have a PowerPoint presentation, so I'm just gonna, this is gonna work, so we're gonna try and hit this here.
Oh, okay.
Judge Stovall, this is Daniel Ray. I don't know if that mic that Daniel is using is, is working. I couldn't hear anything when he was talking into it a moment ago.
Okay, we'll check it. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much. As we get the PowerPoint up and going, I wanted to just say thank you for having us here this morning, and we are kicking off the Lake Tewocany Conference of Plan and then moving into the zoning regulations. Last week, we met out in Quinlan with the Planning Commission and had a kickoff meeting with them. They had a lot of good input, and we're gonna ask you some similar questions because as we kick this off, of course, the Commissioners Court's a very important stakeholder. The Lake Planning Commission's an important stakeholder, and so what we're doing today is doing just a quick overview through the PowerPoint. I'll walk you through everything that we're doing, and we are going to ask you just for, you know, what do you see as, you know, a couple of the issues that you see as development around the lake that you've heard or experienced? We'll have another opportunity when we do stakeholder interviews to sit down with you either in person or on the phone, whatever, whatever works best with you to get your more detailed ideas. So if you think of something later today, after, after today's meeting, we can capture that in the stakeholder. So really just to, to get some glancing issues, you know, what people are thinking as far as what is, when we talk about zoning around Tewocany, what, what are some of the issues?
Daniel, can you kind of tell the history of it before we start, or is that gonna be part of your presentation?
It's gonna be, it's gonna be part of the presentation, but as far as the history of the entire project or zoning before.
But before, I mean, we're trying to revise what rules that we're putting in place, wasn't seventy-eight or nine or somewhere along in there, and they haven't been touched since then, so.
And that's probably good, good just to go ahead and jump into that, that point right now. What the state has done, they have set up special legislation in the Texas Local Government Code, Chapter two thirty-two, that allows counties to do zoning. Now zoning's, and county zoning's very rare. Typically only cities do zonings inside city limits, and so that's what the state authorizes as far as can you control the use of land? Is this area over here for homes? Is this area over here for businesses? Typically, that's reserved for, for cities only, but the state has set up in two thirty-two special lakes, not every single lake in Texas, but certain lakes, and it's all divided into subchapters. So newer lakes have been added. Tewocany was, was added a long time ago, back in the seventies when it was established. You had, you had an election. State law establishes how the zoning gets adopted and how it's maintained. So the, the Planning Commission, established by state law, all that stuff's in there, but, but it's enabling legislation. So what we do, of course, we live in the best state in the, in the country, and what the state legislature has said is counties, if you want this zoning, you know, we're, we're conservative by nature, but if you guys want this, we think it's a good idea for you to have this. Now, not, not everyone who has the ability to zone around certain lakes does so. But you have had that in place for a while. The implementation of that, and this is the same for every, every county that has it, it is difficult because county resources are not set up the same as a city resources where you have a code, code enforcement and, and all those things. That, that's really just following, following to county staff. So sort of the history of that is, is the state has enabled us to do it, and counties have adopted it, and it, and the state has recognized that there is, of course, no natural lakes except for Caddo Lake in, in the state of Texas. Every lake that we, we've made here in the state is manmade. We put a dam in there for reservoir purposes, which has been great because it's fueled our growth and people need water. But as that has been done, what the state recognizes, well, there's gonna change. A lot of things are gonna change for the people in this area, especially around the lake. So we're having these, these issues where, you know, a lot of development's gonna congregate around these lakes. A lot of people from outside the community will come to recreate and to fish and do all these things. So we're gonna have similar things to a city as far as people wanting to use the land, little congestion, and so needing zoning is one way to help manage this because if it's completely uncontrolled, well, then that can really affect the landowners around that. So that's sort of the history of, of what we're getting, getting into. So, so real quick, I'll, I'll just walk you through these, through these five steps. We'll just do introductions. My name's Daniel Harrison. I'm with Freezing Nichols. We are a planning, engineering, and, and architecture firm, and what we do is we work with counties, cities, municipal utility districts, all those different river authorities, those, those type of public sector clients who, who provide services to, to residents. Next slide, please. I don't know if the clicker's working or not. Let's just try here. And just with me today is David Jones, also a planner, and so the two of us are gonna be the ones that you see most often at, at the meetings and, and before you. So that is who you're gonna see. We have other members of the team helping us, and, but you'll be seeing us most frequently. Next slide, please. That's, okay, it's working now. Okay, so progress to date, what, what we've done so far. As you remember, we worked on the subdivision regulations. Subdivision regulations apply countywide, so just not in the lake area. So we worked on the county regulation, also adopting the Engineering Standards Manual to go along with that. So if you look at where we are in the schedule, of course, we tackled the subdivision first, and that was really phase one. Now we're moving on to the plan for the lake, and the plan for the lake is different than the zoning because we need an overall guiding document to help us with the zoning because we just don't wanna zone haphazardly or because, you know, you're getting pressure one way to do something because when an issue for rezoning comes to the, to the Planning Commission, they're gonna review it, have a recommendation, but, but how are they making that informed decision? They need a, a plan to go with that. And then, of course, that same question's presented to you as you are the final authority of, of what's something in its zone. So once we get done with the plan, we'll move on to the, to the zoning regulations. And what we're doing right now, sort of on this first dot here, we're, we're really just doing the kickoff, getting the, getting the project started. So we, like I said, we met with the zoning commission last week, meeting with you today. Then we're gonna go to our public input. We're gonna have stakeholder interviews. We're, like I said, we're gonna, we're gonna pick one day, either have an area in Quinlan. We may be meeting at the City Hall where we can bring people in, depending on how people feel about meeting face-to-face. We can set up a phone call. Also know maybe driving to Quinlan's not convenient for everyone, but, so we'll set up a phone call on, on or around the twenty-third. And then also, we're gonna have a public meeting, and we were talking, and this is one of the questions. We have three questions here at the end of the, end of the presentation, but we'll talk about the public hearing or the public meeting, public open house, where we bring people out. The Planning and Zoning Commission, what they were thinking is an in-person meeting is a good meeting. We talked a little bit about that. Do we wanna have an in-person meeting? Do we wanna have this try to be all online? We wanna get your, that was their feeling. If, if you feel differently, we can talk about that. Mayor of Quinlan mentioned we could possibly meet at one of the intermediate schools in Quinlan. We had worked there, so that's a possibility. If we would like to do an in-person meeting, of course, online is, is available too. And then after we have that, that public input, because we really wanna know what people think should be happening around the lake as far as land uses and the development that people are seeing. So we'll draft the plan from that public input, and once we get that plan drafted, we'll have another open house. Hopefully by that time, everyone's comfortable with all the vaccines that have been out, and we can definitely have that meeting in person, probably back at that same intermediate school in Quinlan. And so that, that's really the, the plan moving forward. So once we get that plan done, then we need to update the zoning. So we'll have the information that we know that is, is desired by, by people through the public input, and we can update the zoning, and we'll, we'll draft that. We'll update the map, work with the Planning Commission to do that, and then, of course, work with you and update you through that process and ultimately bring it to you for adoption. So sort, sort of the purpose is, you know, we have this great resource in the community, in the county, and how, how do we manage it? Well, one of the things we're gonna do is we're gonna really plan for it. And so what we have here is just a map showing, and, and you have a hard copy of these maps here where that planning area is. So if what the state law sets up, it sets up the elevation line that we go from, and then five thousand feet from that line. So basically think just the area around the lake. You go five thousand feet, creates this buffer around the lake, and that's the area where the county can zone. Once again, the Planning Commission is set up as a recommendation body to help sort of administer, make recommendations to the court, and then, of course, the court's the final authority on, on the zoning in the area. We take a look at, as things are going on in the area, we take a look at where the ISDs are. So whose ISD is important because we're thinking about also, there's growth in Texas. Once again, I sort of mentioned we're in, in a great state. We're in a great state for development and growth. People are moving out here. So school districts are, are interested in knowing, well, what's our future population? How many students will we eventually have? This type of growth affects schools. We also take a look at, you know, things like drainage basins, where all the water, rainfall somewhere in the county, where does it run to? So as you can see, most of that green area, it's going into Tewocany. We look at physical features. This map is really showing some development, properties that are developed versus, versus properties that are, are more for, for agricultural purposes. The blue's more the Sabine River Authorities area that you see on there. That, that's not part of the, part of the zoning. And we look at existing land uses. When we talk about existing land uses, what is the land simply being used for? Is it used for, you see the yellows and the, and the, and the oranges. Those are for residential purposes, and then we get to some of the darker red colors. Those are for businesses. So we really get to looking at a map, seeing where is the development out in the area. We can look at what the current zoning map shows us. As this is, leads up into updating this map, we need to know what the current map is showing us, and so this is the current zoning map for the area. We can also look as far as, do interesting things like look at parcel sizes. This helps us know, of course, where more plating has occurred, smaller lots. You can see the darker colors where the smaller lots are, the larger colors are in the, in the, in the yellows. Those also could be good opportunities for, for future, future development and also subdivisions. I look at thoroughfares, of course, because people are gonna have to drive to these areas. That also can determine, you know, what type of uses should be in certain places. Do they have access to infrastructure as far as roadways go? CCNs, these are certificates of convenience and necessity. So who is providing water services out there? A lot of people, of course, are on wells, septic tanks, but they're all also, these water providers out there that can provide water and wastewater, water services. So what we, what we like to talk about, destiny is not a matter of chance. It's a matter of choice. What's really great and what the state has recognized is that counties have an ability to really establish where they want to go as far as, as far as the lake areas are concerned. So the people who get to really establish that are the people who live in the area. And so the plan is a policy document. When we get done with the plan, it's really the, the vision that we have in twenty years. What do we see this area becoming? What should it look like? What do people wanna see happen in their community? And the plan's really that. It's a guide for that, and it's a guide to help us zone. So the plan is not actually the zoning. You'll see different maps and things that we showed on there, but it won't be the actual zoning or regulation. It's all the important background stuff that helps us make those right, right decisions. So when a decision comes to you and someone says, hey, we wanna rezone this property in this part of the, the lake area, you have a document to look back and say, well, what did people think this area should be in the next twenty years? Does that really meet the vision? Because something's already zoned, and if they're wanting to change their zoning, we look back at the plan and say, this is what it, the plan's calling for. Not saying that there couldn't be a good idea that the plan is flexible enough that we can change it and go in a different direction, but with all the facts that we have right now in two thousand and twenty-one, this is what we think moving forward. So when we get to the zoning ordinance, that is going to be the set of regulations that govern. So if we have a minimum lot size, if someone was plating and the zone was for two acre lots, that would be the minimum lot size. So those were the actual regulations, or if it's an area for commercial, this would be the commercial area. So of course, mention this a little bit. Why are we planning for this growth? We live in a great state and great growth potential. We had five point one million residents here in the North Texas area. In two thousand and twenty, we went to seven point seven, so two point six million people we added in that twenty years, and we're projected to add another three point five million by two thousand and forty-five. Now, of course, that's all spread out in the North Texas region, but that's a lot of people creating a lot of demand, wanting homes. And, you know, if we're looking at, you know, trends with, you know, do you have to be, you know, close to the center of Dallas to, to have access to jobs? No, not necessarily. You can work from your house. You can work from different places. Some of the trends would, would indicate that spread out growth is, is possible. We already talked about this. We touched on the authority to plan, so I'll sort of skip that slide for sake of time. Why are we playing? We, we do wanna avoid unregulated things that can happen. As I mentioned, this is a reservoir for drinking purposes. So if we have chemical plants out there, if we have different things that could potentially pollute the reservoir, that, that's something we want to, want to avoid. So things like runoff, those type of things are taken into consideration because, as I mentioned, lakes in Texas are built for reservoir purposes, so we wanna be sure to keep those as clean and, and pollution, less polluted or least polluted as possible. And of course, we're, we're trying to manage a great resource. A lot of people, of course, come to, to fish and enjoy the lake, spend time on the lake, build homes next to there. So we, of course, wanna manage this great resource. So what's your, what's your role in this process? Of course, provide us input, provide us direction. We, we, we need your guidance. We'll be coming to you with updates. We'll be working with the Planning Commission and then coming to you to, of course, get that final, final approval on that. And I'll sort of go real quickly through these slides, but you know, just when we're taking a look and asking people, you know, what, what type of desirable development do they wanna see next to the lake? Is it, is it retail? Is it commercial? Is it single-family homes? What things should be avoided next to the lake? What are the key issues that, that people are experiencing? Of course, and we know people are using it for, for recreation and, and just really just enjoying this, this great resource. So of course, different options about, you know, how development looks adjacent to the lake. And once again, this is on private property, basically going from that take line from the lake back five thousand feet. So different opportunities for different type of homes, all, what all that should look like, different type of retail possibilities. We also took, take a look about what people don't wanna see as far as what's, what's going out in development. You know, is, is it the smaller, you know, bait shops and things like that? How do we, how do we feel about these different types of uses to make sure that the lake's an enjoyable place that people want to invest time and money, invest in their property in that? And then, of course, what's the appropriate guidance for that? I like, because as long as we set a bar for development, what's the appropriate height to set that bar? That, that depends on what people in the community think that should be. Just take an example here, you know, area next to a lake, you know, how should that screening be treated? Do we wanna have businesses like this right adjacent to the lake? Is this a better place for to have on a side street or something like that? If we're talking boat storage, talk about parking in the right of way. Because when we start thinking about all these issues and, and someone's coming out and, and neighbors are, are wanting their neighborhoods to look nice, how, how are we, you know, these type of uses working with the existing neighborhoods? RV parks, that's something, of course, that we always run across when doing lake plans and lake zoning. RV parks are very popular, but a lot of come with a lot of issues. when doing lake plans and lake zoning. RV parks are very popular, but a lot of come with a lot of issues many other times. We have this picture here because I just wanted to highlight, of course, someone look at this maybe and say, this is a nice subdivision, nice and new. But if this is out in the county, you know, maybe this is really not the right type of development. Because if you look at this, we have concrete streets, we have sidewalks, we have different types of things out there, which even though that this may be considered a nice development, it may be inappropriate as far as the density and and how much demand on county services that 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 would place. And then, of course, you'd have other uses that that you'd want to want to limit, things that could potentially, like I said, pollute the lake, things out like that. So just real quick, I just wanted to ask three questions. And this first slide is just really focused on on. We'd like to hear from you as far as what you think some of the issues are. Just to give you a heads up, as far as when we were talking to the planning commission, they were talking about, you know, maintenance and the and the quality of homes and just making sure that they're they're nice communities out there. A lot of small lot stuff that was done a long time ago were were some of the issues that some they were they were mentioning. But I'd love to just hear maybe just one one thought from everyone about what they think one of the key issues around the lake would be.
I feel like this right here, I like what I see. I appreciate what you've done in reference to this. I believe we're going the right way. We do have issues down there. Of course, enforcement will have to be taking place and that's something we need to think about in the future, but I've been hit with this quite a bit since 2001. And they, a lot of people are upset, why do y'all have these restrictions? The reason that we have these restrictions and this whole thing took place is the people in that area voted on this. This wasn't a big deal that came up before the commissioners' court. This was an idea of the people that looked out for the future of Lake Tewocan. And so it was the people that desired this and we're carrying on. I think we're heading in the right direction. I appreciate it.
I think it's a very appropriate time that we're taking this up. Around the lake is redeveloping rapidly. Homes that have lakefront that are maybe 40 or 50 years old, maybe they were built as a fishing cabin or being torn down and they're building 3,000 and 4,000 square foot houses on the lake. And we've got to make sure that as these people are coming to our county or or people are moving around in the county to the lake, that when they go invest a lot of money, that we're protecting their investment as best we can. And and this is a a great step forward that will help push that growth along if they got confidence that the that we're going to be able to control the growth and make sure that they're not going to have a trailer house next door to them when they put in up a 4,000 square foot house or something. So we're all, I think we're all excited about this. This is another step with the county of trying to handle and manage the growth with our transportation plan, the subdivision rules, and now this planning and zoning that we're trying to be prepared as best we can, as quick as we can for the growth we've already had, as well as growth we know is coming. Anybody else?
How do you factor in existing circumstances in this planning process? How do you how do you deal with those?
Well, that's one of the things we're we're going to be taking a look at. Couple of things that that we were talking about is just so everyone knows, if there's ever an overlap between any of the county zoning and one of the municipal zonings out there, it's the municipal zonings that that take effect. So their their zoning would trump inside the city limits, what what the county does. So when we look at existing things, that was one of the things that the planning commission was talking about was, you know, some of the existing neighborhoods. They would want to see, you know, signage and acknowledgement that, because a lot of people don't know that that the zoning even exists. So so what's one of the communication things that we can do to the existing areas? And they had some ideas like, like I was mentioning, as far as like either signage in the roadway or billboard or something like that. And and, you know, what ways can we get more information out about, hey, just FYI, you're in this 5,000 foot zone next to the lake. So notification to those areas was one thing to sort of help get them involved. So they knew what was going on. But that's one of the things that we'll need to take a look at when we're identifying the areas about like, what's important in in this part of the area, whether we're on, you know, what part of the lake and and what the development currently looks out, looks like out there. So.
Restrictions, those within the city. They have theirs. This is for outside that city.
We need to make sure we got some good fee schedules attached to all this too, that we can approve. Currently, I don't think there are any fee schedules and you know, to manage this and pay for it, we don't want taxpayer dollars doing that. We people that are needing the services and making developments and making money off of it, they need bear the cost of some of this expense. So we need a fee schedule, which we currently don't have. And in a good enforcement, that's the other thing, they don't, the current rules hard to enforce, you know. It'd be nice to get rules we can enforce going forward.
And and that was all, those comments echo a lot of what we were hearing last last Thursday night at at the planning commission.
If I'm not mistaken, Lake Ray Roberts, is that correct? They already have had this in place a long time in reference to fees and it's worked out there. And I believe two other lakes, but I believe this will be good.
Correct. And and both Cook County and Denton County do do zoning on Ray Roberts.
Yes.
Any other comments?
And then just just two, two more, two more quick questions for you. We wanted to get your input on was, we are going to do a stakeholder meeting and if there was and and you can if you could think of anyone now, that's great. If not, just email Brian, Brian Tool, and he'll get us that information. But as far as a stakeholder and who we should interview, we talked about, of course, we'll try to set up interviews with with all of you. Probably easiest on the phone, or like I said, we're going to try to spend one day in Quineland and just bring people in face to face if they would like to meet face to face. We'll we'll do that. So whatever is easiest on your schedule, we're going to do that with all the planning commission members as well. They were mentioning, you know, maybe some other people to try to have some some bring out to those interviews. Sabine River Authority is one of the people that they mentioned. Homeowners Association sort of in the area that they knew about what was one other. But is there anyone else that you guys think that that we should reach out to as just as far as asking them what they think some of the key issues around the lake are?
Well, kind of going back to enforcement, I think you need to talk to, you know, the law enforcement and first responders in that area as well to respond out there.
I don't know about game wardens, maybe. Would they have any? They got one or two, they got one or two game wardens that works the lake.
I believe that would be great.
All right. If there's anyone else that you think of, like I said, please, please email Brian and and we'll add those to the list. And then as far as the open house, we just wanted to get your feeling on. We were planning an open house in the middle, middle of May. And so talking to the planning and zoning commission, there's a possibility that we could have the intermediate school in Quineland as a place where we could say, please come out and we're going to have an open house. Just wanted to make sure that everyone was okay with having an open house in person, or do you think we need to have it more focused online? Or if having an open house in person would?
I got to leave that up to the the commission down there. They all live in that area and probably got a better handle than we do.
Okay.
And 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 most people are going to be from that area, so they've probably got a better feel for it.
Yeah. And and they think most people, you know, vaccines are going well and everything, so that they think most people are going to be comfortable coming out to a public meeting. So that's probably what we're going to focus on.
I think you'll find out that they're very positive in that area about having meetings like this. Very much.
All right. Well, that that hits my three questions and thank you for that, for the time to present that and we'll we'll take this information. And then, like I said, we'll work on, we're saving the 23rd, but we're going to talk to everyone to see what works best with everyone's schedule. So those dates are a little bit flexible on there. We're just going to try to work with everyone's schedule to see what works best for everyone and then capture everyone who can't through the phone. And then, like I said, we'll we'll work with the school district as far as what dates we can have the school to.
Daniel, is the list of your schedule, is it within some of this paperwork?
It it is. And I actually, I'll, I'll actually give give a few copies to Jennifer and then maybe she can pass them out to you. But I have some copies at my at my seat over there. Thank you, Daniel.
Thank you.
Okay. Actually, I'm number four. The racial profiling report for Hunt County Council Precinct 3, that reports in your package here, motion for approval.
So moved.
A motion second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action item number five, formal bid number 211-21, pre-mix oil and sand. Award to all responsive vendors is per bid award attachment in local government code 262.027E. 12 month contract effective April 13th, 2021 through April 12th, 2022. Entertaining motion for approval.
I make a motion that we accept all bids.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action item number six, formal bid number 212-21, clear span, concrete bridges and concrete box culverts. Ordered all items to Yoder Bridge as per bid award attached, 12 month contract effective April 14th, 2021 through April 13th, 2022. Entertaining motion?
So moved.
Second. Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action item number seven, formal bid number 213-21, road oil and emulsion for seal coat. Award to all responsive vendors as per per bid award attached in local government code 262.027E. 12 month contract effective April 23rd, 2021 through April 22nd, 2022. Entertaining motion for approval?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Actually, I'm number eight. Proposal for TWR Construction Services for Hunt County Courthouse window mockup in the amount of $8,475 funding from courthouse capital improvement, line item 10-611-6500-2233. Commissioners, we've had this close to a year ago where we were talking about trying to get the windows at the courthouse fixed. They all leak air and water. A lot of them have water leaks in them. Which we have to do according to the historic permission. We were in the what in the mode of getting that project started when COVID hit, so we had to put it on the back burner because we couldn't let people in the courthouse, which they need to do this work. Since then, the person that had been, we'd been dealing with to do the construction work has passed away. And his company is not any longer around. So we've, the architect helped us find a new company. And Chris Kember and I had met with him and their proposal is along with our architect is that for $8,475, they're going to remove one window on the bottom floor, which just happens to be in y'all's conference room and commissioner's courtroom or commissioner's office. And what they're going to do is because of the age of the building and because of the type of the construction, they're going to fix one window and decide along with architect, what's the best methods on how to do it? And they're going, they hope they can take it out where they can take it back to their shop, board up that window in y'all's conference room and take it and do all of the the refurbishment and cleanup on it and put the seals on it and then come back and put it in place. They're not sure that that's going to be a option, but that's what they'd like to see happen. But the whole purpose is so the architect can write up plans and specifications so that we can go out for bid on this project sometime. But we don't, there's no way to do it till we know what we don't know.
Your honor, okay, this right here, as far as this 8,475, that's not doing the windows in the courthouse, correct?
It's doing one.
Doing one. Okay.
That's doing a mockup for one window.
And a lot of this comes back to the historical association.
Right. Historical commission is going to be out here next week to look at it. Also, we'll have to have approval not only from our architect, but from the historical commission. And both those parties will be reviewing this. Since it's a historical courthouse, we have to meet all those regulations.
In my office, I have a window that's completely shattered.
I understand. Heard about it. We're trying to fix that, Philip. What they're, what they're going to be looking at, the the other contractor was talking about putting thicker glass to help with insulation numbers. Since then, they've all of them, this contractor plus architect has looked at that some more does not think that's going to be feasible or affordable, that it would take too much modification to the frame. So they're suggesting that that we're going to put a higher rated glass in what's in it now, but then they may be putting a film on it. The other, I think, I don't know if y'all remember or not, if we ever got to court with it, the other contractor had bid like $20,000 to do this project. But he was proposing two windows. And he was going to do one with a like a storm window inside of it to get the insulation factor as an option. Chris and I decided that you know, if this works right and we don't have any, and it improves the efficiency of what we want then and and our leaks of air and water, then we may not need that anyway. So why spend it to mock it up? So we think this is going to be a big enough project. Let's fix the windows. See how they do. If we're not satisfied, then we can come back. That is a a lot easier process to put those storm windows in. It'll just be a frame inside the offices inside the window and one big solid piece of glass that will fit that whole window. So those, that'll be a lot easier project. So I, Chris and I's recommendation was let's just do one window and let's figure out how to get them fixed.
This penning that they're going to put on it?
Yeah, some kind of film. It'll be, it will, that's not like a tent in a car, is my understanding, but it's got a tent that will reflect the UV rays or something. I haven't seen it, Philip, so I don't know. Now they're going to, it's a film they're going to put on it. Yeah, it's my understanding. Y'all will get to observe it, it's in y'all's office. Y'all have firsthand knowledge of it. Any other questions? I make a motion, we approve this.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action item number nine, a grant award in the amount of $91,739 to Hunt County for the Texas Indigent Defense Commission for indigent defense services. Entertaining motion for approval?
Your honor, I'd like to point this out. I agree that we need to do this with the understanding according to the law that we cannot cut any of the financing that we already are giving to it in reference to this grant.
Okay.
So I do make a motion, we accept this grant.
Second. Motion second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action item number 10, a resolution buying between Hunt County and the Texas Department of Transportation for the replacement of the bridge located on County Road 3131 at Calle Ech Creek, at County Road 3132. Philip?
I make a motion that we allow this agreement to take place. Where the money is going to be spent, our part of it's going to be spent on Shelby Street. That's what the contracts is, and I think it's a good deal.
So text dots actually building it, right?
Yes, yes. I'm building the one on 3131 text dot will take care of the Shelby Bridge.
Okay.
Yes.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action item number 11, assistance in Hunt County plating fees, plan review fees and flat application process. Yeah, come up, Brian. Commissioners, we we haven't reviewed or looked at our fees for our new subdivision rules and and with the types of developments that are coming in now. We've never had any kind of engineering review fees and and a few other fees that Ryan will go over. So we're not here to approve this today. It's just to get some feedback so that we can bring it back at another date and try to get these approved so that we can make sure we're not paying for all the engineering analysis we're having done. If the developer pays for those costs, not, not the taxpayers. So it's been a little, Brian's been doing some research on it, it's kind of a complicated, it's not complicated, it's just what's fair and what's, what's, how's it gonna be done is really hard part, so Brian, tell us what you know.
I've uh, I've talked to both of our engineering representatives as to uh what their thoughts are, if they had any input, uh, both of them had some input, but uh, at the current time, you know, they're reviewing these and we need to get some sort of a, a fee set up for them. It takes more time, not only in, in my office, but for the engineers to review as well. So uh, they're looking into, into fees that they are going to charge. We're gonna have to turn around and, and uh, pass that on to the developer or the, the property owner, we don't need to be, be handling those fees. I gave you a list of fees that I proposed. That's just a proposal, uh, I'm certainly open to any kind of input, how we may need to do it. Uh, most developments that we have now are gonna have some sort of a drainage plan and a drainage study on them. That's gonna have to be reviewed by an engineer. Of course, construction plans, civil plans, uh, when you're dealing with drainage and road construction, we have to be able to, to cover those very detailed plans. You may have forty-three pages plans that, that are to be reviewed and I don't have the, the knowledge to review those thoroughly. So, you know, some, some subdivisions may have larger civil plans, some may have smaller civil plans, that's why I did kind of a sliding scale. You know, certain, up to a certain number of lots could be one price, uh, another block, another price. And then as you get on up into these, these large developments of fifty, sixty, hundred lots, uh, you're talking about pretty extensive plants, uh, so there could be a pretty significant review fee there. Uh, so look over, see what you think, get with me with any kind of input that you may have and, and we can revisit them. I also turned in a proposed plat application, uh, kind of redoing it, addressing some of the issues that we have now, uh, road links, and if there's road to be built, a lot of the developments we're gonna see coming up are gonna have roads built. A lot of them are gonna need retention or detention, some sort of drainage. So there's gonna be quite a bit uh, of, of stuff to look at, so.
The first, uh, first page with Hunt County plat fee, that's our current fees, correct?
Yes.
And then it's got Bastrop Kaufman, Victoria and Liberty County, uh, which are similar counties to our size and a couple of those are adjacent to Metropolitan Liberty and uh, Bastrop are, are both next to Harris County and Travis County. They all, some of them don't even do their engineering fees, some of them, some of them do, some of them don't.
I mean, they're all over the place, I tried to get something that would be uh conducive to development here, obviously, we don't wanna, we don't wanna squash development with too high of a fee, but at the same time, we can't, we can't put the burden on the taxpayers to review these plans and to uh, to develop the streams, that's on the, the developer. Uh, they need to, they need to foot that bill.
We talked about maybe doing it to, when we're doing replats, we, we asked the people doing the replat to put up a thousand dollars because we have to do advertising and notices and till we get into it, we don't know how much that's gonna cost us. And normally it runs six to seven fifty or something like that, but we've had some that go over it. So we ask for a thousand dollar deposit and then we refund the money to them. Uh, we just collect what it cost us and then we give them their money back, make sure we're covered. You know, we might look at that on something on, on particularly these bigger subdivisions, I don't know if anybody likes that idea or not. If, if we had them put up a deposit and uh, on the fifty lots plus, because we can get in fifty lots plus, you know, there, there's gonna be cases where there'll be more than one detention bond. There might be a couple, three of them, depending on the topography and gonna be extra street work and, I mean, there's be a lot more to that. So it's hard to have, it's hard to set a fee that says this is what it ought to be without us losing or overcharging, so.
Right.
Some ways I kinda like the, just a deposit of, at the time of the plat and whatever, whatever we end up spending, we give them the rest of their money back, so.
You're talking about how many lots?
No, I'm just talking about for the engineering plans, when they get over fifty lots particularly.
Yes, over fifty.
Just come up with a, with a deposit of whatever, twenty-five hundred dollars or five thousand dollars or whatever seems to make sense.
Whatever makes sense.
I haven't put it up, but with understanding it, if we're just charging them for what it costs us, nobody's trying to make any money off of it, we're just trying to cover our costs.
If, if we were to do audit on, might look into, would probably find out that yes, we're already having taxpayers pay part of this for the
Right now we are.
For the simple reason that uh, uh, they're going out doing uh, our engineers that we're hiring in order to protect the people. Basically, uh, they're having to make possibly as many as three or four visits to that location, make sure everything's right.
Yeah, and that, and do we not get an inspection fee in here either? I thought we were gonna get an inspection fee.
We, we're gonna have to figure on the inspection fee, I'm actually uh, doing some, an inspection with the uh.
Like a per, per trip fee or something?
It'll probably need to be a per trip fee. Uh, and there again, that's something, uh, you know, this isn't a, not looking for a motion today, looking for some discussion, some thought and let's get back together and figure out what needs to happen, what makes sense, because there will be, there will be inspections on these. Especially whenever they're putting in streets, whenever they're proposing detention, that's the kind of stuff that we have to look at.
Well, also basically everything's going to our engineers in reference to uh, uh, you know, under the, whether they're building it actually right, even the streets themselves as far as core samples and stuff like that. And we're having to pay for that study to make sure it's all right. Uh, so that's, that's what I'm saying.
You know, we've been absorbing that and of course, we've been having plat fees and so that we've been, uh, probably hadn't cost the taxpayers any money up until this year when we brought a staff personnel and Brian. And now that's, you know, those fees are to cover the cost of staffing, so we don't have taxpayer funding, which I think we'd have to look at and get Bruce and him to tell us, but I think we're, we're in a ballpark of paying most of Brian's fee out of, Brian's salary out of the fees we collect, but it's certainly not gonna cover, our current fees aren't gonna cover any other additional costs. So we need to get, get, we just need to be aware of it because we're gonna get more and more of these larger subdivisions coming in. And we don't wanna, we don't wanna spend a lot of taxpayer funds.
The inspection, the inspection in reference to road inspection and also the two-year, uh, well, it's a bond year now, one and two.
I think I, if y'all, y'all are all in the same office, if y'all don't mind, just, you know, thinking about it and then get with Brian and give him your thoughts and then you can come back, next time we'll try to agree on fees and
Right.
exactly what, how we wanna do it, whether we wanna do a deposit or exact fees or just what, sure.
And uh, I believe that any geotechnical expense is the uh, the subdivision regs specifically say that that, that's a cost
Yeah.
that is burdened to the developer, not to the county.
That's right.
They're responsible for getting us geotechnical studies on their roads and, and providing that data to us.
Okay, y'all all right with that, y'all just think about it and just, we're hitting you with it today, so. Think about it, get with Brian before the next meeting, let's see if we can get something done on this.
Judge, in reference that right there, are they also paying our engineer for uh, what they, the studies are, are they actually
Not currently.
Not currently.
That's what I'm saying.
That's, that's what we're, we're trying to get this, so.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Okay, uh, no action number eleven, action number twelve, the appraisal report for current property housing precinct two barn located at twenty twenty Gilmer Street, Kettle Mills, Hunt County, Texas, seven, five, one, three, five. Possible relocation and sale of current barn, purchasing new location. Randy brought this up to us uh, several months back about, you know, problems at his uh barn and getting out on the uh road in the morning with the school traffic, now they're building a high school right beside him or we're nearly close, nearly beside you, which is gonna put him in a school zone and trying to pull trucks in and out of there. So whether or not this, you know, what we're here to talk about today is that, is that feasible to think about relocating that somewhere else that might be safer for the public and make a little better situation for precinct two barn also. Uh, I've, I've been concerned, I've shared this with Randy, that I'm, I'm concerned that with the roads and the shape they're in, it, it doesn't look very good for us to go out and spend money on a new facility for the precinct commissioner unless we can kind of swap dollars and it's not taking money away from roads. So that's why we, I guess when we talked about it once before, we'd authorize to get an appraisal. So we had that uh, done and it came in at three hundred and twenty thousand dollars, I believe. And uh, so I guess the next step in my mind would be is I'd work with Randy and maybe go out and try to find some sites and see if we think we can, if, if we think three twenty would replace, if we could replace it for that money, then we could come back and report to the court that uh, if, nobody's got the appetite to do that, there's no reason for us to waste their time. So we, we need to know if the court's interested in even doing this or thinks we ought to stay put and just need y'all's input, know what the next step is.
Randy, what, what acres do you have right now?
I, I have two acres there at the barn in Caddo and I don't have any area for uh, you know, materials.
Oh, yeah, your, your backs are sure.
It's on a lease, you know, out on the highway and if they ever sell that property, we're gonna lose that.
Right.
Your Honor, I think it would be wise for this commissioner's court to find out if there's any property available and what, you know, just to go out and see. Uh, we're not taking any action on this, except, you know, we got this report, but I think it's worthwhile to go out. Now, he was looking at a piece of property that uh, uh, kinda weirdly shaped and all this, but uh, you're gonna have to do something later on or continue renting this, leasing this other piece of property. But I think we do need to go out and look and see what's available because, or right now, we don't have to buy it, but we can look and see what's there.
Well, there's no reason to, if we're not serious about buying, there's no reason, go look and see what out there. So what, what we need is, yes, you're willing to push this further if it makes financial sense and it's practical for the court and for the taxpayers' funds, then, then I don't mind helping Randy. If we're gonna go do it and find a spot and come back and hear y'all vote it down, then I don't wanna waste my time. So just, that's kind of what we're looking for, is everybody give us a head nod, are they okay with pursuing it? And we'll be willing to back this if we find out something that makes sense to do. If you're just opposed to building a new facility, then we need to know that too, I mean, that's, that's y'all's call.
Where do, where, where do the funds for this come, just for clarification?
Well, I mean, by the time we get this done, I assume that, you know, A, we can't sell it until we buy something. So uh, in next year's budget, uh, I mean, it's gonna take us that long probably to analyze anything. Anyway, we need to put it next year's budget or use capital improvement money until that such time we have capital improvement money in our budget that could do it. We're gonna, if we do it, we gotta go buy something, build it, get it ready, he's gonna have to move out and then we can start worrying about selling it.
Refunding money with what we get.
Whatever money we get back out of that, then to go back into capital.
Refund it, but.
Offset. Whatever we spend.
I think we need to move forward and check our options in reference to what's going on, I think it's gonna be needed for the future.
Steve?
I'll fill the sign, yes.
Mark, you okay?
Yeah, I feel, I feel the same way.
Okay.
I mean, you gotta see what's gonna cost, but I mean.
Well, yeah, I mean, I don't, I mean, like I said, I'm, I'm probably not gonna be forward if we have to spend twice that amount of money to relocate it, that's
Yeah.
probably not a good time to do that.
Right, right.
No, I agree with that.
Okay, if not, I'll work with you, Randy, we'll try to get some spots and
Okay.
figure it out. Uh, okay, no action needed on that, uh, action item number thirteen, formal proposal number two, ten dash twenty-one banking services depository contract. Recommendation is to award to American National Bank, the only responsive bidder effective May first, twenty twenty-one through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five with option to renew for a two-year extension. Brittany?
Good morning.
Morning.
Uh, at the beginning of March, we um requested proposals from um, all the banks in Hunt County. I physically reached out to each ever, each and every one of them and we advertised in the paper per local government code. We got one responsive bidder, which is American National Bank, which is our current depository. Um, so that makes the process a lot easier whenever you just have the one uh, bank. We're very happy with our relationship with American National Bank, we don't have any problems at this point. Um, as far as uh, online banking, customer service, um, we've never had a problem with them, they've always been able to accommodate our needs as needed. I uh, believe I put the offer letter in your packet, um, what I have, what I'm recommending is option one, uh, which is a premium earnings credit rate of thirty basis, thirty-five basis points and um, that is an increase from twenty-five basis points by, uh, six years ago, whenever they offered the contract in two thousand fifteen. Do you have any other questions?
Any questions?
I've been real satisfied with this in the past, yes.
And if y'all agree to uh, accept the recommendation, I spoke with Nancy Pena and Sean Franklin yesterday and they have given, we've drafted the bank depository uh, agreement uh, that just requires the judge's signature if the court accepts the recommendation and we can go ahead and get the other paperwork started after that.
All right, no questions. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of action item number thirteen with the uh, option one in the offer.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number fourteen, the Treasury's monthly report for the month of February twenty twenty-one.
Yes, uh, for the month end of February twenty-eight, twenty twenty-one, uh, we had a month-end balance of fifty-six million, seven hundred and four thousand, eight, sixty-three and seventy-one cents. That is our cash on hand investments. And any, uh, the report uh, shows any outstanding debt we have, then uh, for February, what was new on our outstanding debt is we started making payments uh, for the specialty road crew dump truck that was financed through Van Corp and that is now listed on our outstanding debt.
Any questions? Entertaining motion for approval?
I make a motion, we accept the report.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Brittany. Action item number fifteen, contract proposal for the doc you signed in the amount of seventeen thousand, sixty dollars effective April sixteenth, twenty twenty-one through April fifteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Twenty-two, twenty-two, sir.
Uh, did I read that wrong? Well, it says, yeah, it says twenty-one, it says twenty-two, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, should be through twenty-two, thank you, Philip. Commissioners, this was uh, something we approved and paid for with COVID money when the uh, we started getting the uh, DA and the CA's office where they could work from home and also where the courts were holding uh, online uh, trials and hearings and all. It's required, uh, so people couldn't come into the courthouse, weren't able to come into the courthouse, they, we entered, we paid for this contract last year, a smaller contract. I think we had one last time that was only for a thousand or fifteen hundred, uh, what do you call it, envelopes? But I guess it's like a case and uh, they've used uh, during that year and I think they're up like sixteen hundred, seventeen hundred envelopes that they use, so. And uh, one of the courts didn't use it very much and they're gonna use it a whole lot more uh, now and all the courts are say it's really speeding up the process and making it a lot more effective for, and also the CA and DA. So it really makes their jobs a lot more efficient and also uh, I'd entertain a motion to approve that we continue that service.
So this is for all the courts and the CA?
Courts and DA, DA and CA, okay, yeah.
Is this for JP's also?
No, they have something else they use.
Okay.
They use magistrate or something, yeah.
I, I, I think the way things are going, I make a motion that we uh, put this contract proposal.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action item sixteen, upgrade of approximately thirty-two hundred feet of County Road ten ninety-eight from dirt to rock in precinct one.
Your Honor, I make a motion, we approve this, the funds are in escrow?
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action item seventeen, upgrade of approximately thirteen hundred feet of County Road ten ninety-nine from dirt to rock in precinct one.
Your Honor, I also make a motion, we approve this, both these roads are part of our High Point uh, development going on in up there. Your honor, I'll speak a motion, we approve this, both these roads are part of our High Point, uh, development going on in up there. Should be a, a lot of nice houses on nice big acreage, nice big lots. I'm excited about it, so I make the motion, and, uh, likewise, the funds are in escrow.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action item eighteen, upgrade of approx- approximately two thousand, six hundred and forty feet of County Road forty-one oh six from dirt to rock in precinct four.
Make a motion to approve this, money's in escrow.
Second.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action item number nineteen, naming private drive off County Road thirty-three eleven in precinct three, Turner Trail, due to nine-one-one addressing.
I make a motion, we pass this.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action item number twenty, a request to construct electrical power distribution facilities across County Road thirty-four oh four and precinct three.
I make a motion, we allow this construction with the normal stipulations.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action item number twenty-one, a request to construct electrical power distribution facilities across County Road forty-one twelve and precinct four.
Make a motion to approve this construction with normal stipulations.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action item number twenty-two, recommendation of the Hunt County Lake Trucking Planning Zoning Commission to approve a specific use permit allowing used auto sales lot on Lot Nine of Brian's Park Edition along East Quinlan Parkway.
Uh, your honor.
At this time, I'm gonna open it up for public.
Yes, sir.
Public hearing, is anyone here to speak for or against this item? Daniel Ray, you still out there, has anybody been sending anything in online for this one?
There's no comments online for, for this one.
Okay, thank you. No one wishes to speak, I'll close the public hearing. Now, Philip, what question do you have?
Yes, sir, that's what I was wanting to make sure, my friend.
Okay, all right, uh, I entertain a motion.
I shall move, we accept the recommendation.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action item number twenty-three, a replata lot, one R, two R, and four R, Kettle Ranch Estates in precinct three. This time, I'll open this up for public hearing. Anyone here wish to speak in favor of this? Anybody online, Daniel?
No, there's not.
No one wishing to speak, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion for approval of this replata.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion in second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action item twenty-four, pi- final plat of Bowles Estates in precinct four.
Make a motion to approve the final plat for Bowles Estate.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action item number twenty-five, the final plat of Twin Eight H Ranch in precinct two, right.
On your, uh, on the, the paper copies that were submitted, they called it the Triple H and H Ranch. Uh, got a call from the, uh, property owner saying, no, it's, it was supposed to be called Twin H. So there's the, the little discrepancy, it's gonna be Twin H on the final Mylar copies instead of Triple H on the, on the submitted copies there.
Okay, so we got it posted correctly then?
Yeah.
Go get twenty, okay, everybody clear on that, it is Twin H, no, get that name correct on their plat. Entertain a motion for approval.
Make a motion, we approve this.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Approval of accounts payable.
I make a motion, we pay the bills.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Approval of line item transfers.
Make a motion for approval of line item transfers.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Approval of budget amendments.
Make a motion for, uh, approval of budget amendments.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Approval of payroll and personnel.
Make a motion, we approve the payroll and personnel. Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Daniel, we getting comments from anybody else online?
No, there's no other comments.
Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion to go in executive session under items.
One through five.
One through five.
So move.
Got a motion, second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. We're in executive session at eleven twelve. Everybody need break?
Okay, it's 11:49 and we're back in regular session. Is there anything else before the court today?
I do want to bring to attention, I'm not sure if everybody knows this, but our county clerk was nominated by Region 6 for County Clerk of the Year.
Wow.
Yay.
Congratulations.
Anything else? Now I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a motion second on the favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries were adjourned at 11:49.
So Jennifer, who do you have?